Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will go ahead and do a couple oaths of office. We'll start with Councilor Berger.
All right, if you raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Yep.
I, Kelly Berger.
I, Kelly Berger.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
That I am a citizen of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
That I am legally qualified.
That I'm legally qualified.
To assume that office.
To assume the office.
Of city of Squim.
Of city of Squim.
City council position number one.
City council position number one.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Washington.
And the state of Washington.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of this office.
Discharge the duties of this office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, well, the city clerk, please take roll call.
Counselor Kelly Berger.
Here.
Counselor Dan Butler.
Here.
Counselor Vicki Lo. Deputy Mayor Rachel Anderson.
Present.
Mayor Brandon Janice.
Present.
Counselor Harmony Rutter.
Here.
And Counselor Nicole Hartman.
Here.
All right, if there is any changes to the final agenda? All right, there is none. There is a motion to approve.
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
And I will second.
All right, it's moved and seconded. Anything further? Any opposed? I see. And then that motion will pass. All right, moving on to item six, one ceremonial on this evening. This will be a proclamation honoring the service of Counselor Vicki Lo, who undoubtedly will be her last counseling this evening. Right? And whereas Counselor Vicki Lo began her service on the Squim City Council on November 26, 2021, carrying a goal of fostering a community that is united, thriving, and inclusive of every voice. And whereas effective democratic representation depends on a diversity of perspectives, and Counselor Lo consistently contributed valuable and distinct viewpoints to council deliberations. And whereas Counselor Lo has consistently expressed her values as an advocate for the most vulnerable and marginalized members of our community. And whereas Counselor Lo has contributed to the city of Squim council deliberations with perspectives gained from her decades of advocacy for indigenous communities who remain integral partners in local and regional governance. And whereas Counselor Lo approached every decision with integrity, compassion, and commitment to ensuring that Squim remains a place where every resident feels seen, heard, and valued. And whereas Counselor Lo championed initiatives that strengthened human services, public health access, and cultural understanding across the Olympic Peninsula. And whereas Counselor Lo supported efforts to bridge, build bridges between governmental nonprofit and tribal organizations fostering partnerships that will benefit the community long after her service concludes. And whereas Counselor Lo worked collaboratively with fellow counselors, staff, and community members, even in moments of challenging debate to advance thoughtful, community-centered policy. And whereas Counselor Lo worked for the benefit of others and was a public servant who went above and beyond by serving as a representative or liaison to various local and regional committees. Now, I for, therefore, I, Brandon Janice, Mayor of the City of Squim and the Squim City Council hereby express our heartfelt gratitude to Counselor Vicki Lo for her contributions and services to the city of Squim. And be it further resolved that this city of Squim recognizes Counselor Lo's dedication and her unwavering commitment to equality and inclusion and her lasting impact on our civic life. Signed on its eighth day of December 2025, Brandon Janice, Mayor. And I will turn it over to Counselor Lo. She has any words?
Yes, I do. I actually, I have something for each of you. I have some cedar roses that were either made by myself or my uncles. And in our culture, we give cedar because for our ancestors, it touched every aspect of our lives. And so when we give cedar, it's to recognize you for the work that you do that touches every aspect of the lives of the people in our community. So I want to thank you all for the opportunity to serve with you. I've really enjoyed it and learned a lot. Learned a lot about local government, traffic lights, water types, sanitation. But I think, you know, being part of our local government really helps me understand what the other work that I do at the state level. And so I just, it's been an honor. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done together. And I appreciate you adding the part about difficult debates because we have had those. But we always walk away still being friends and knowing that we're working together and that our differing, differentiating viewpoints make us stronger. So thank you all.
And if anybody on council wants to say anything?
Just a super quick, I'm going to try not to cry. Dang it, Vicki. Just that you have always been such an inspiration. You're so strong and you always add value to the conversation and remind us of so many things that we need to be mindful of. And I'm really gonna miss the debate part. Oh, excellent, excellent. So I just want to say thank you for being an inspiration. Just gonna be really Indian for a few minutes, sorry. Just for the record, I don't think that's anything to apologize for.
Just to add to and repeat probably what I heard Rachel just share, you are an inspiration, both locally as well as your commitment to your other, your day jobs. Thank you for that. And thank you for participating with us on this. We will miss you.
You've been such a mentor and an inspiration. That's been said by fellow counselors already, but it's true, truly bears repeating. Thank you, Vicki, for all of your service to our community and all that you are. It's been an honor to serve with you and learn. And I, I hope to embody some of the amazing things that you bring to public service. So thank you very much.
And I just wanted to say, even before you were on city council, you've shown great strength and determination and confidence. And it's just impressive. And I respect that.
Yeah, I've enjoyed being on council with you. I respect your confidence and learned a lot from you. So thanks.
Thank you, everybody. Yay to last meetings.
All right, move on to public here. But there's nobody signed up online or in person. So I'll open up to the floor if anybody wants to make a comment. All right, CNN, we'll go ahead and move to consent. City clerk?
Items on tonight's consent agenda. Land vouchers totaling $2,836,702.45. The city council meeting minutes from November 24, 2025. CDGB for Flores Acres Project. Flores Acres wastewater system loan. Systemic is signalized intersections of local agency agreement. Squim Dungeness Valley Chamber of Commerce contract. Wilson Engineering on-call contract. The LTAC meeting minutes and grants. Squim Municipal Code Chapter 1.13 Code Enforcement and Ordinance. Squim Municipal Code Chapter 8.04 Nuisances and Ordinance. Replacement bypass pump purchase and sewer bypass pump purchase.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
And I will second.
Anything further on this? Any opposed? I see. And then the, that motion passes. All right, moving on to general business, item 10A, criminal justice contract amendment. Look to Matt.
Thank you, counsel. And again, I already toasted Vicki in the back room before this meeting, or I would have had some wonderful comments as well. Appreciate the journey and the learning. Back to the agenda item, I think I'm here to cover. Let me, I think it's all covered in the cover sheet, but I'll highlight a couple what I think are key points or factors in why we bring this matter to you tonight. One is, this is a 10-year-old contract, so it's pretty hard to do it. You know, that's pretty outdated for something if you think about where the world has moved in the last 10 years. And, and it's a comprehensive contract, so it covers every aspect of criminal justice, all four, what I call categories or parts of the continuum, which is the jail system, the court system, and then the public defender and the prosecution as well. Anyway, the reason this is before you is because we just recently got some data from the county that was supposed to be done on annual basis. I've been here four years now. I remember one meeting and I, and I was taken by Chief Sherry over and Christina over to the county and said, now, what's this again? What's this again? And they just loaded us with data. And then I never, we never had another meeting like that. Todd, the county executive director, reached out about midsummer and said, hey, you know, this, this contract's ending at the end of the year. We probably need to get, get together. I mentioned it to Christina, and she kept reminding me, we need to meet, we need to meet. So we tried to do that through the summer and early fall. And I'm not sure why we didn't. It was really up to the county, and it's written in the contract, the county. I'm not trying to throw them under the bus, great folks. But we didn't until about mid-fall, which is October-ish. And so when we, when we started having meetings and PA is, Port Angeles is also in those meetings, they, it was, anyway, without going into a rabbit hole, it was, what are we going to do? What are you thinking? And then they, we finally said, we'll start giving us some data so that we can know where we're at. So they, over the next month or two, we received kind of packets. They took each one of those four sections and did a sort of a deep dive on the costs that it takes to manage that as a county, and then the volume that was going through that part of the criminal justice system by the three entities at hand, Squim, PA, and the county. And, and then in the end, after, and it took them, you know, four to six weeks for them to give us the four pieces of that puzzle, they also then assigned a corata share of costs for each of those four parts of the continuum. Yeah, based on volume. Anyway, the bottom line, and again, that's probably too much information, but we really only got the full picture less than a month ago or so. And it was like, okay, well, thanks for giving it to us. And, and when you added up their new allocations, I figured it would be more than a cost of living increase, a CPI. It amounted to $233,000 on top of what we had been paying them for an annual fee of $451,000. So almost, you know, halved it again. And we, I don't really know, I don't dispute that, but I would like to verify that. And so we said, well, can we have some time to verify this? And the problem is, is the way the contract was written 10 years ago is it terminates on, on December 31. And it really didn't have any provisions and therefore an extension. So it was, you know, it was pretty tight. We, we've asked them to allow us an extension. They weren't really thrilled about that at first, but then realized the need for that. I let them know that you all would probably be interested in a third party. I certainly am to verify the data, to look across the state and look at other methodologies for determining costs and allocating those out, et cetera, et cetera. So we, they have agreed to an extension, or we call it an amendment to the original contract. We didn't agree to pay them the full allocation. As a matter of fact, we said we'd go half just to show good faith. And we're, we know we're in partnerships with you. But, so we'll increase our, our monthly installments for these services. But please give us a year. We, we sent them over an addendum. We, we sent them over an addendum contract a couple of weeks ago. They reviewed it and then sent it back, which we are still in the middle of marking up and whatnot. I was invited to, or we were invited as a city leadership to attend their recent commissioner meeting. I do have an A-team working on this, Christina, Sue, and Chief Hill and myself. So the four of us are the ones that are doing the deep dive and working on all this. And we tried, we presented our proposal for the amendment. It had key points, we wanted 12 months and they said nine, we sent over nine, they sent back six. So we're in the middle of some of that back and forth. But, but in the end, this is your last meeting and the contract runs out in December 31st. So I'm, I'm kind of giving you probably more information than you need, but. So we need to continue those services. We've, we've got an agreement to go now six months. We have sent RFQs out to, or made calls to four different consultants that would be able to help us, starting in early January, to give them the information that we've got from the county. We've got the county committed to meeting with us on a really tight, regular schedule. We've asked them, they've only given, when they finally did give us data, it was only for the 2024, one-year snapshot is all that was, that were actuals. 25 they haven't gathered yet. And when you go back really beyond 20, you know, 23, 22, you got COVID and they were even closed during those years. So anyway, we, they promised to give us 25 actual data by the end of the first quarter, et cetera, et cetera. So really, I think I'm here to let you know the situation we're in. We felt it really important to continue on with the four services that we receive from the county. They're good partners. We do a lot with them on a lot of different levels, from Flora Acres to, to, you know, water and sewer and infrastructure and a lot of other things. But, but this was, is going to require an extension of the services. And so I think we're asking you to allow us to continue to work with them on this amendment. I assume for me to sign that, since you won't be in, I, as soon as we get something signed, we would bring it back to you at the very first available meeting for your ratification. This is all transparent things. And then, and then, which would be January, I assume. And then we will be working hard and fast and furious to try to understand all of their data, compare it to other models around the state, validate expenses, and then to work toward a, a new contract, a protracted contract. And I don't know if that will be five years or 10 years, whatever, but something that is updated for sure. So I think that was what I wanted to bring to you. That's just kind of a broad contextual overview of why we're where we are. Any questions on that? Yes?
On the cover sheet, in the financial implications section, I think there's a typo in one of those sentences. The first sentence, it says, "The city will pay an additional $9,700 per month for criminal justice services for a total of $48,358 per month in 2026." And I think that was meant to say per year, if I'm not.
No, no, so right now we have four, right now our contract with them is 4,000, 450, it's up higher on that, on that same page, $451,700 on an annual basis. So you divide that by 12 and then they asked us for another 32, 33, and we divided that in half and then divided that by 12. So really, you're, it, you're catching, we worked on this, the numbers, it takes a minute to kind of put that together because we've cut what they want in half and then we're adding that.
Oh, that, this is tricky.
Yeah, so we're adding that to what we're currently paying them with a little CPI and then dividing it by 12. We just said, we're gonna continue to pay you ongoing, not the full amount, but half of that and until we can get to a new contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
Good, good catch. And we stumbled with that ourselves.
I have a question for Christina, though, on this matter. Because of what this is, do I need to recuse myself on this vote?
No, and not on any future vote either, because the only benefit that you get from the county is your salary and wages, you know, your salary and benefits. And so that would qualify you as having a remote interest in this agreement. You have no sway or anything on the, on the county's end.
Okay, so I wouldn't need to recuse myself? Okay.
I'm, I'm curious, and this just shows my ignorance, how do we, how do we determine the, our volume? Is it where the police action, the arrest or whatever takes place, or where the warrant is served, or the address of the person? Or how do we, how do we know how much of this is ours?
So the things that you're describing are things typically associated with the police work themselves, right? The service of the warrants and all of that other sort of thing. What the county is proposing and what other jurisdictions will often, some other jurisdictions will use is the percentage of volume that goes through the district court and/or through the prosecutor's office, because the prosecutor will typically have different volume levels, what they call referrals, because the cases go to the prosecutor's office. They will choose whether or not to decline to try a case, but that's still workload that they have to accommodate for as well. And so while the rest of them would then go through the district court, public defense processes. So volume is, I'm not a financial person, so I want to be careful, like my word, accepted, air quotes, and accepted means of determining volume and allocations.
So then the pro-rata is based on population?
It's, it's based on the cases that we submit to the, to the criminal justice system.
Got you.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, and I guess I shouldn't talk about, so ours is 233. Our colleagues down the road is, you know, more than 2 million new assessment and due to volume.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And the other question is, it seems like a couple of months ago, time goes by, there was the issue from the state legislature that requires more reduced workload for public defenders, kind of consequently then more public defenders or reducing the caseload. Is that factor in this at all, or is that just sort of still out there as ether that we don't really know enough yet?
All of us are grappling with that and that is obviously a big concern of the county because they are the ones who, who contract with the public defender's office. There, you know, anecdotally, on my city attorney listserv, they, there has been some requests from folks to look at, you know, public defense weighting and weight, like how much you weigh, not W A I T, right? How, how they are weighting those various cases and things like that, because that's been a significant source of discussion as well, because, you know, you don't necessarily want to treat a, a run-of-the-mill Walmart theft, right? The same as a DUI or domestic violence or other things that, that cause more court staff, public defense time and all of those types of things. I don't know, because as Matt said, that there's been so many, it's been the amount of data that we've gotten from the county in such a short timeframe, we haven't spent a lot of time talking about the public defense standards, but that undoubtedly will be a topic of discussion.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, there is a motion.
I moved away with the second touch on this matter and direct staff to continue to work on finalizing data and other analysis needs with the county. And once finalized, authorize the city manager to sign the amendment on behalf of the council that is consistent with this motion.
Second. All right, moving seconded, anything further? Any opposed? I see, and then that motion will pass. All right.
Thank you, counsel. We'll, we'll bring it back, the agreement that we get to. Thank you.
10B, Council Rules of Procedure, Article IV. Heather?
So in tonight's agenda packet for council's consideration is a proposed language update to Article IV of the Council Rules of Procedure. And it's a pretty straightforward item, but there is one thing in particular I wanted to bring to your attention. In Section 4.1, it lists the committees that require, that require council representation. And you will see that Jamestown is stricken. And this is because that committee was set to meet for three years as required by the hearing examiner decision. And that three years, that timeframe is up, so I'm removing it from the list and we'll move it on that big spreadsheet to optional participation. So other than that, I'm a bit open for any questions.
Any questions?
I'm, again, just expose my ignorance, in 4.3, the roles and responsibilities, I'm reading that we are obviously representing the city and so on, but we're not to participate in decisions? And that's not, that's not been my experience, so the expectation of the, almost in staff force, for example, they, they.
I think this is geared more towards city advisory bodies. So when it's, this is for not necessarily those committees that you sit on, but for staff, like a council liaison for.
Parks, Arbor, Rec.
Arbor, the arts commission and just kind of helping putting some guidelines on council's involvement with those advisory bodies.
Thank you.
Other than the Parks Arbor, well, and then Planning Commission. Are there others? Am I?
There would be like, well, there's Civil Service Commission, but that's, you know, doesn't really, so those are the main, the arts, the parks and Planning Commission, LTAC, but I think.
Yeah, reading through this seemed very straightforward and they didn't, there, I didn't have anything that percolated to the top for me. And I would say that what's described here pretty accurately describes what I have been coached to do and what my experience has been with the Arts Commission and the Parks Arbor Rec Board.
Okay.
Yeah, so, thank you. I like how, I appreciate that the new version has more bullet points. I think that's just an easier way to organize the information. So thank you, that's all for me.
All right, if there's nothing further, there is a motion.
I moved away with the second touch on this matter and direct staff to present a resolution on the next consent agenda approving the proposed language update to Article IV committees, boards, and commissions of the Council Rules of Procedure.
I'll second that.
All right, moving seconded, anything further? Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion will pass.
Thank you, counsel.
All right, youth liaison.
Just a real quick, I wanted to introduce our new youth liaison for the 25, 26 year. This is Lily. A lot of you may know her from some, some events throughout the community, but I will let her introduce herself, what she's into, what her year, all that jazz. Lily!
Hi, I'm Lily Chimsland. I'm this year's, or one of this year's student liaisons. I'm in the 11th grade, so I'm a junior. And I'm really excited to learn about like city government. I'm very interested in it as a career, possibly going into international diplomacy. And so this is a nice way to introduce myself and see if it's a thing I'm interested in. Yeah. So for a report on what's going on at Squim High School, we're currently planning our Winter Wishes Assembly, which is a really big event. It involves a lot of community members and businesses around the area. And we get donations and then students fill out forms and they say they get a gift for themselves or another person. And we try to get a gift for every single student who makes a wish. And it goes from a bag of cookies to sometimes we pay for people's driver's ed, or we give people new laptops or bikes or any sort of thing that they need. And then we have a big assembly and we give everything out all at once and it brings a lot of like spirit and joy. So yeah, so we're kind of doing right now. And then we have winter sports. Yeah, that's it for now.
Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, counsel. Nice to give you a quick city manager report. This afternoon, we had a legislative luncheon. I think I mentioned it a couple of weeks ago that we were planning on that. Turned out to be really successful. All three of them were here in person. We met in the Burkett Room there with a nice slide deck and some handouts. I was able to give them the same handouts that I think are before you there exactly. That's the way they turned out. We walked through them in detail, slide by slide and, and bullet point by bullet point. They seemed really impressed. I guess my public works guys have gone, but we had, we had Paul there, Nick there. Who else is there? Myself. Oh, and, and Megan. Yeah, for sure. Yeah. Who said that? Yeah. So, yeah, because Megan is, is very close to them, exactly. So anyway, that was, that was a great conversation and we'll see. DeBoer had driven up for it and stayed afterwards and talked to us and said it was one of what he thought was, you know, is one of the most productive meetings he's had with legislatures that he's seen. They are constrained by a budget and so, you know, they don't have a lot of flexibility. As many of you know, they've been making the rounds to all of their constituents and the different organizations out here, kind of free session and their message is the same. It's, it's going to be a tight year for them, but they really like the fact, they love the agenda that you all had put together on the policy side as well as on the capital side. So thank you for that. Other than that, I, I'm gonna skip quickly over kind of my report, but I did have a, we have quarterly board meetings, I guess that's what it's called, at the Healing Clinic. We just had that last Thursday. John was with me, a deputy chief, and it was well-attended. They, they provide amazing data and quarter by quarter, month by month. And it's just, I wanted to report back to this group, what an amazing service that is. They really are doing nothing but great work and, and helping a lot, a lot of people. And so it's, it was really nice to participate in that. They, they have their full staff there to answer any questions and, and just to think that we have that resource. If you haven't toured that facility, you really, you really need to. It's, it's a phenomenal service to the community. And they, and they service even Jefferson County folks and all the way out to the top of the peninsula and out to Forks area with a mobile unit and whatnot. So just super impressive. One of the reasons I wanted to bring that up is they also have been paying for a navigator thinking that they might need to have additional resources on the grounds because of what the public thought might eventually be. And to date, they haven't had one case. So they are paying like $100,000 for a navigator that has never been used, but they have donate that to Peninsula Behavioral Health as a staff member for them and cover the salary for that, which I hear our police department uses often in non-healing clinic situations. So I just want you all to be understanding and appreciative of that great service. They talked briefly about their inpatient hospital, which is going up, siding's going up, and so it's on track. And I think it's opening late summer, something like that. Yeah, so, so we'll, I'm sure we'll be hearing more about that. But anyway, that, that was a really good meeting and just super impressed. I'll move quickly through some of my other bullet points. As you know, Carla's busy trying to finish up the policy chapters of the comp plan. She had a very successful planning commission meeting here last Tuesday. And so that will be, that will be moving forward. And she'll be presenting on Coffee with Colleen on Wednesday morning, should you have a chance to see it live or it's recorded and we can, as a matter of fact, I'll just, I'll send that out for sure. And we can, matter of fact, I'll just, I'll send that out for sure. Sue wanted you all to know that she continues to respond to the state auditor's office for information that's requested, but there hasn't been any issues to date. And she's moving forward with year in close. So she's also been really helpful with trying to get close to this criminal justice data as well as helping set up and find some subject matter experts, consultants that can help us do a deep dive on the data. So HR lined up three interviews with GIS administrators for the IT team and as well as working on the preparation for an eventual hire for a code compliance officer and a new police officer. So those are going well. IT is busy. They have over a hundred service desk tickets a month and that's consistent across the board. They aren't, they track the satisfactions of the, everybody that fills out a ticket has a chance to fill out a customer satisfaction, whatever, quick survey afterwards. And they're in the high 90s on that. So it's, they're really busy. They're, they're now focusing on, on finishing the police communications trailer for our next tabletop, which will be in a couple of months. And then they're, we're really trying to get connectivity out to all our public work facilities so that they're on the internet, so that we can get security and badge access and Skaten and other softwares out to all of those. So they're, they're doing a great job. And police department led the three emergency management meetings internally as well as with our, our regional partners here and are working, of course, with HR and legal on code scrub, job descriptions and whatnot. From Public Works, I just want you to know, if you know Katie Cole, she's one of our engineers, been here, not sure how long before I got here, four years ago. And she passed her professional engineering exam and snuck off to, call it a holiday or a day off, snuck off to Seattle and took the exam because whatever, and passed it. So it's public information now. So Public Works is also quite busy, of course, with all of the holiday, you know, downtown holiday hometown tree lighting and a lot of electronics around the city with Christmas lights and tractor parades and whatnot, setups and takedowns. And so that's probably my, they're also getting, preparing for the cold weather that we're hitting and brought a lot of sand and some, some spray for the slippery streets. So I think that's everything I wanted to touch on. Any questions? It's been, it's been busy, although it's holidays, but you can feel it's starting to slow down just a bit. Thanksgiving and Christmas coming, so. All right. Thank you so much. It's a pleasure to meet with you and work with you.
All right, committee reports.
I sent out through the city clerk's office a report from the homelessness task force meeting last week. Just this morning, it was distributed. I apologize for the lateness there. But just, it was a very sobering meeting to hear a report on the impact of the changes at our federal administration level with regards to housing and urban development and HUD and the impact that that, those changes are going to have on us specifically. So that's what's outlined in this report. Leave it for you to read that. But these things take effect pretty much immediately, the first of January. The state of Washington is participating, the Attorney General of the state of Washington is participating with 23 other states in litigation that's currently underway to get an injunction that would allow there to be a bit more time for there to be implementation or negotiation or something. So should that fail, it's, it will be devastating to probably 1,200, 1,300 people in our community. Part of it that makes no sense, if, if, just stay out of commentary, I guess. It just makes no sense, is that what is being replaced will cost about a thousand dollars per month more per person than what is currently in place. And so whatever the motivation is, it is not for efficiencies sake. The actual cost to society, to put that in quotes, of moving people out of stable housing and back onto the streets then shifts to law enforcement and hospital emergency rooms, which is as expensive as, as we can get. There's, there's no more expensive way to, to deal with this persistent issue. So anyway, I leave that to you. I'd be happy to answer questions. Appreciate what Collin County is, is doing with the other counties in terms of trying to coordinate responses and then also communicating with our legislators. They, as, as we heard before, when we did our letter earlier in the year, they just really value specific examples that they can use in debate as these things are debated. So. So there's that. Then that's the, the gloomy part. Something that I've mentioned before and want to just keep mentioning is that the homelessness task force is undertaking a, an initiative to provide hospice care and a higher level of skilled nursing care for senior people that are unhoused and, and looking for getting kind of a pilot going and looking for a facility and, and so on. So that'll be a, a big lift, but it'll be a significant addition. I can't remember, I didn't write it down, can't remember the demographics, but it's not insignificant, the number of, of seniors that are in the homelessness demographics. So, thank you.
I hope that our attorney general is successful in their legal efforts.
Pay attention, it should be in the next week or two that that'll be at least decided at the district court level. And I'm sure it'll be appealed up as these things always are, but at least we'll get an initial decision.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. I wanted to take this moment to pipe up about the first Friday holiday tree lighting event that was hosted here at city, in the city chamber, city council chambers and also in the Karen Kuznick Greece Gallery. Just wow, just wow. It's always an amazing time, but it was really, really lovely to be here. The brass quintet was incredible as usual. And the tree is, is fully decked out in so much joy from the schoolchildren. So I, I couldn't be more, I was just, I'm so glad I was here. It was a beautiful, beautiful day. There were lots of glowing faces and wonderful essays. And so thank you, Rachel and Brandon, for reading those. And I want to put a shout out to Sarah Hurt, our arts coordinator for the city and the Arts Commission. Yay. So thank you. Thank you for bringing that forth and letting the kids of Squim share their joy with the world. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that. I totally missed that on my report. So I'm so glad you, you mentioned that. That was a great event.
And I had my last lodging tax advisory committee meeting. I'm hoping that maybe a new counselor might want to take up that position when they come on. But really want to thank the lodging tax advisory committee for stepping up and figuring out how to make the tractor parade safe. I think, you know, that kind of started last year and it was very nice and very safe and a wonderful event. So thank you.
All right. Any more, any more reports? All right. Anything for open discussion? I think just end, Vicky again. Thank you for the last four years. You won't be missed.
I might come visit. That's not a threat.
It just sounded like one.
Please do come visit. It's always lovely to have you. You bring so many, so much good perspective and so much good input. Thank you very much. And you make really good lasagna. Thank you.
You're welcome. And with that, I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting.
Anybody want to go to the January 6th finding commission or finding meeting?
Trying to get out of here.
If you do, let Heather know. Otherwise, it's January 12th, Monday, 6 o'clock. And the floor is yours, Vicky.
All right. I'd like to adjourn or move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. Any opposed? Everybody have a great holiday season.
Thank you.
And we'll see you next year.